... meeting to order.
I get next one.
You have in front of you minutes from October 20th. Anybody give it a quick read or do you want to put it out till next month?
I did look on my line.
All right, if nobody has anything like a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is 60 Elm Road. And the applicant has requested a withdrawal of the application without prejudice. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative.
Just kudos to the applicant for their comments to the town staff. I think that was very well done and appropriate.
All right, next item on the agenda, 124 Main Street. Attorney Robbins. So before we, this is a continuation from last month. And before we start, you're probably all wondering why we have this new decision with all the red in it. Joe, would you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, since staff sent out the packet to the board, we did have a conversation with Attorney Robbins to go over the draft decisions. There are some changes that staff and the applicant are amenable to. We can go over those if you'd like, they are in red, as you noted in the decision letter. Chiefly, they're pertaining to one bullet description talking about the conversion of the existing dwelling. And then a couple of the conditions you'll note on there. Number three on the drafted decision under site-specific conditions, talking about prior to certificate of occupancy, being weather-dependent. Staff went back and forth with the applicant, have a six-month limitation on that weather dependency. Number four, going from prior to building permit to prior to occupancy permit. Again, staff was comfortable with that, as requested by the applicant. And then number five, added in here, something that was indicated in prior decisions of the board. Debris from demolition will get removed within 30 days following demolition. So that was added and the applicant was fine with that.
That's kind of a standard boilerplate that we have here in Westford.
Correct.
With this board, anyway.
Right. So that was mainly the changes, Mr. Chairman. Again, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer it, or I'm sure the applicant would be as well.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Robbins, what do you got to say?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell &amp; Robbins. Also with me tonight is Jim Zegowicz. I let Mr. Waterman have the night off because I don't think we have much to go through on civil engineering. Mr. Cattaldo is also with me tonight. I think, other than the draft decision, the only homework we had from the board from the last meeting was to add some dimensions to the architectural plan. So I actually had Jim come tonight just to run through them, just so the board can see them a little more clearly. He did do an updated drawing, which is in the board's packet. So if you just want to run through them quickly, Jim.
No, sure.
Just so the board can see them. They were, some of these dimensions were on the plans, but we've put them clear now, so I'll let Jim run through.
Okay, could you go to the streetscape elevations? There you go. So, at the end of the last meeting, Jim Zegowicz with the MZO Group Architects, Main Street in Stone.
At the end of our last meeting, I think the only requests we had were to quantify the height of the building. The existing farmhouse, we're not going to change the height of that, so the existing ridge will remain. That's the dimension replaced to the right of the existing height type. For the carriage house, that building will be about 26 and a half feet. Showing 26 foot 6 and 1/4 inches, it's going to be somewhere based in there. And that's to the highest point. I'm not quite sure exactly how the local zoning ordinance specifies the height of the building. Typically, it's to the mean height of the highest surface. If that's the case, then the height of the building as defined by that would be certainly much lower. It would be down, probably close to 20 feet. The other dimensions requested were the garage. You can go to the carriage house plan, please.
Is it this one here?
No, the actual floor plans of the.
Oh, the floor plans.
So, in the garage space, somebody mentioned that they'd like to see what the real dimensions are. So if you look through the, all the spaces in the building that have a label on them, they also have the dimensions left and right. But we added string dimensions to the garage spaces themselves. And if you look closely at those, it's going to hide the, see it on that plan. But the back garage, we have the widths. They're about 11 and 1/2 feet wide as you enter the garage space. The last three stalls will be 25 feet deep. And the stall closest to unit three, which is probably unit three's own garage, that's about 23 feet deep. We also added, we also did a little drafting updates here. If you look closely at the porches, they've been reduced in the, on the floor plans to match exactly what the elevations had shown. Previously, they were just a little bit wider. Now they're smaller. We also had shown on the elevations of the carriage house, the side elevations, the seams are matching at 26 and 1/2 feet. Let me clarify that a little bit, again, showing it to the highest ridge of the building. And lastly, there was a comment made about, let's take a look at and see what the real layout of the farmhouse units might be. So if you go to the farmhouse plan.
Do you happen to know which page that is related? This one here?
So we took a real quick scab of the schematic layout for both of those units in that building. One thing to, one thing we also did in that is we arranged the unit separation wall so that they stack. There's no, there, in no place throughout the building where will there be any over-under type situation from unit to unit. So it's a much easier fire separation assembly to construct, much less noise or complications, things like that. If we start with unit one, which is to the right-hand side, on the first floor, we would have, moving from the front to the back of the unit, the front space would probably be more like a den, open family-type space. More of a formal living room space behind that with the fireplace. Moving further to the back, we'd have a dining area separated by, separated from the kitchen by both a pantry and a powder-type half-to-half space currently as designed. And what that, the way the plan works out is we are, that does afford us the possibility of using as many of those walls, of the existing walls, as we can. It's a little tight with the kitchen right now, but I think if we keep that all open and depending on how we appoint the pantry and the openings between the kitchen and a corridor space and the kitchen in the back door, which we've also shown there, we will need a second means out of that first floor, so we've shown that in the corner of the building. That would be getting us onto a little deck of some sorts in some way to get to the ground. As required by code, we'd need that second means. On the upstairs of that same unit, to the front of the unit, we'd have a master bed, generous master bed, with a generous master bath and a pretty good-sized walk-in closet, again, moving front to back on the building, or from the bottom of the page towards the back of the page. In the back right corner, we'd have the second bedroom, pretty good size, a linear closet. And moving to the left, an enormous common bathroom and a very generous laundry space. So, unit two, if we get back down to the first floor in unit two, we maintain the existing front entry as it has been forever. Walk in the front door and the way things work out, because the upstairs are so narrow, front to back, it's difficult to split the space and have a common, we originally intended to use the existing stair. It became very difficult to actually get a common bed on one side and a common bathroom on the other side of that stair and then to have the master bedroom beyond that. There was just a lot of circulation complications there. And really, it was going to leave some units, some spaces without windows and just, it was a very complicated little arrangement. So, again, on the first floor, we'd have the living space in the middle, an office-type space towards the left end of the building and a common bath, a powder room in between. The laundry would be on the first floor currently, shown tucked into the corner of the stair. And in the back, where the existing porches in the building, we would leave that as open space for a mudroom, breakfast area, kitchen and dining, all looking out towards the big field and meadow in the back. On the second floor, if you follow stairs all up, up from the first and around the corner, there's going to be a bunch of windows, small because the second, because the roof of the first floor is climbing up into that second story. We'll have some windows along there to light the corridor. The master bed would be towards the front of the building with the walk-in closet. Again, off to the left, the master bath would be off to the right, stacked over the laundry. Be able to take advantage of a common plumbing chase. And all the way down to the end of the building would be our second bedroom with a couple of small linear closets tucked in under the eaves and access to a common bath right up where the top of the old staircase used to be. That's about that, the square footages didn't change when we reorganized the firewall. It's both units still state about 2,000 square meters out. It is 1,900 for unit two and 2,067 for unit one. That's about that.
Do we have a guesstimate as to how high the existing house is?
I don't, I don't. If I were to guess, I'd say it's probably close to 30 feet.
So it's relatively the same height as the new carriage house?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit higher than that. The elevation is developed for the farmhouse, we're doing it a long time ago, quickly based on photographs and measuring a couple items and trying to scale it out like that. But I would say that's 30 feet or so.
The only thing I'd like to just let the board know is we have started working with historic. One of the best things about a conversion is being able to keep the historic features of a structure like this. So we have started the process of working through them to try to keep some of the important structural designs from the outside structure and some of the things that they think is important from the inside structure. And even with some of the buildings that we're demolishing, they would like to see some of the beams and some things retained or used elsewhere. So we have started working through that process with them as well.
This is kind of a rare occasion when we know a proposed building is coming down. And I'd like to thank the applicant for allowing our fire department to go in there and do some testing and training. He certainly didn't have to do that, but it's greatly appreciated by the fire department, I'm sure. So, thank you. Any questions from the board? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against? Seeing none. Is everybody on the board comfortable with the decision and the changes in red? Yes. All right, so I guess the first thing we need to do is close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, let's see here. So, what we're looking for is a change from a pre-existing non-conforming use, business of multifamily, to only multifamily use for the conversion of an office workshop into two residential units via demolition and reconstruction. And for the conversion of an existing residential structure from one unit to two units, for a total of four units on the property. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Scott?
F. Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative. I'd like to reference the plan of 124 Main Street by the MZO Group dated 11/5/21. And, do we have a block plan, staff, or is that last month?
We have an updated one, it was the one you received last.
Okay, so, reference that plan also?
Just a point of procedure, the only additional plan is the landscape.
All right. Who else said?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 12 Burn Avenue. Mr. Nab Nasset.
For the record, my name is Mr. Nab Nasset. I guess, you don't stand there already. I'm here representing Geraldine Williams, 12 Burn Ave. Little history on this particular house. This was remodeled about 25 years ago. It's a two-story house now, in terrific condition until the water main broke. It filled up the basement for over a month. People have another home and they weren't at this one. So it wasn't until a neighbor discovered that there was water coming through their first floor. It happened in the wintertime. I don't know if you can actually put the picture of the existing house up there, you just had it.
Oh, it's right here?
Yeah. So, that's a, you could tell it's a, it was a pretty, pretty well nicely built and remodeled home 25 years ago. So now it's all, the first floor got filled with water, saved for a month. And there's a whole bunch of mold that was in there. They did, the insurance company came in and did their best to do it, but the only way to take the floor joist out of it would be to jack it up. You can see that by the perimeters of both sides, it's not going to, it's not too conducive for that because of the, not just the cost, but the front part of that house, where the screen in the area is on the first level is on a slab. So, we'd have to tear off a good section of the house to actually accomplish that, to actually change the joisting in the floor, so. Now it's a complete demo, believe it or not, even though the top floor is in pristine condition. That being said, we're before you for a special permit. Essentially, the new, the new house is going to be, for the most part, exactly in the same spot, except we're coming back off the water two feet. I will mention that we've already been before the conservation, we've got approval from them, which is nice, one and done with them, very rare. But, we did accomplish that. And if you look where the existing deck is, we're squaring off the house, it's there. So that's the additional volume that we're talking about. If you see the plan, it's up there on the board now. There's an existing deck and we're just kind of squaring off and just going with steps. There's really no, no change in terms of the, the existing height right now is probably somewhere around 31 feet. And when we're done, we're going to be 30 feet exactly, 30 feet 8 inches off the grade of the ground, so. Other than that, it's, it's, the design itself actually is the same amount of bend. It's, basically, we're not asking for any variances to go. The non-conformity is going to stay pretty much the same in terms of side setbacks and whatnot. So there's nothing particularly crazy about this one, other than the fact that it was in good shape when we're tearing it down, so. That I get something like this, it's generally the opposite, it's.
I was by there, I was kind of wondering, it looked like a nice house, I was wondering why it was being demolished. Now I understand.
Yeah, but it's, you know, the insurance company sent a group of people out there and they did do the fans and everything like that, but when they started looking at things, we opened up walls just to do investigative work. And I said, because I know, I said, this, they didn't touch any of these things, so right underneath the staircase in the center of it, just open up one little thing, it's just covered with black mold, you know, so. That's, that was the, I'm sure it could be all cut up, like four feet up, but then you're dealing with all these twisted floor joists and it was, the first floor was remodeled and kind of scavved over. There's, there's like three layers of plywood in different spots to kind of level it off before they put the second story when they did the remodel 25 years ago, so. It's, it was compromised, I think, to greater extent. And that's where we're at. But it's got kind of like new windows, new doors, new everything, and it's just, it's a shame that it happened, but that's what, that's where we're at. So, yeah, so it's basically, we're here for you for just the special permit part of this.
Jim, I looked at this house and said, wow.
Why?
People today have too much money if they're tearing that down to build something new, but
I know.
There's a story, obviously.
Yeah.
It's a sad, it's a sad story, but stuff happens. Is it on Townwater?
It is. They also had, well, the one thing, the insurance company, I think, did pick up the tab for the, I want to say the bill was like six or seven grand.
Yeah.
It'd been running for a month and nobody even knows it. And fortunately for them, it's, the existing conditions are, even though it was, it was a dirt basement, there's only like a, you know, probably, you know, less than a three-foot crawl space, but that thing actually literally filled up with water and was coming out the sides. So, yeah, it's unfortunate, but, and they're certainly not giving enough money for the rebuild, so it's going to cost them. But they're not going to have a house with mold either, so.
And Board of Health, there was a note in there from Board of Health on the septic system, how are you making out with them?
The Board of Health, they've actually designed something, I believe that they're going to be in the process for that. We do have a Title V that we can, we could keep the septic there, that's there.
All the water didn't compromise it?
Pardon me?
All the water didn't compromise it?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it was, it was limited to the space that was underneath there, so. Foundation held it in, so. But the septic system itself, it did pass Title V, but they're electing, because of all the work, they say it's 25 years old, it's just time for them to do it, so they're going to, they're electing to do that, so. They will have a new septic system too. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of benefits to the town in that respect, in turn, as opposed to just having a new building, I mean, with the higher tax bracket, but the bottom line is they'll have a new septic system, which I'm sure the lake would appreciate, so. I don't see any, I don't see any negatives to this one, so.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Anybody in the audience to talk about this at all, or against? Okay. All right. So, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? And we're looking for a special permit pursuant to Section 3.6, Connor Westford zoning bylaw, to allow for the reconstruction of a non-conforming dwelling. 12 Burn Avenue. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second? Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative. 30 days for the destruction of the debris. They have 14 days to write the decision. There's a 20-day appeal period, you know all this, but we'll repeat it for the audience. And, good luck.
You're challenging demolition, you've got a tight squad, you challenge the demolition, I'm sure.
I get challenged everywhere around that, not just this one.
Sneak in and turn the water on.
They didn't even see me doing the middle of the night.
Hey, Dan. All right, so. Any general business, Joe, with Sierra?
Sierra has something on a dwelling unit update.
Yes, just very quickly before we get into the other two items, I just want to let you guys know we are working on some ADU bylaw updates, some potential ones for the board to consider. We're hoping to have a solid draft for you for the next meeting, but I just want to let you know that we have been working on it, just not quite there yet.
All right, so, the next item that we need to talk about is a minor modification request for 20 Landmark Drive. Mr. Bentley? So, we are simply here to determine whether this is a minor modification or not. And if it's not a minor modification in this board's eyes, then it's going to have to be this, because this is not a public hearing, this will have to go to public hearings to be reviewed. So this was, was this addition an ADU? It was not, it was just a plain addition? Okay. How come you didn't decide to make the deck bigger when you did the house for the addition?
Well, that was something that we caught midway through construction and in consultation with the town, it seemed like that would be, it might have to reopen the hearing. The hearing was a bit contentious and we didn't want to go there, we wanted to finish construction. So, we identified the need for it midway through construction.
What's the need?
The need is for better access. The intent of this living quarters is for aging in place. And we'd like better access out the back door. We had paramedics and ambulants access through the front door previously. And in one case, the patient, my mother-in-law, was dropped, so it just, it was not so great. So a bigger deck off the back would make us feel better about access. We don't consider it a code thing, but it's, it would certainly make us feel better if we had a larger platform to walk out to. And, and just for general arrangement of seating and things like that, it's a pretty narrow deck now.
It's all doors, all right?
Yes, it is.
How did this come about? Were you like, how did this come about? Were you constructing the larger deck or were you, you said in the midst of construction?
I'm sorry, excuse me for.
The building department picked up on and kind of prompted you to come to this point, or was it?
Oh, no. No, we, so the, the design that we submitted is the one that was built.
It was built.
It was built.
It has been.
The four-by-ten is shown on the original plan.
Yeah, it has been built, yep.
And it has been built, yeah, there's some pictures in there. It has been built and inspected.
And then you left it at that and came to this point?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That was my question.
We're here to ask permission.
You weren't trying to expand that deck?
Yeah, this is fact. Oh, no.
Any other comments from the board at all? Questions?
Could I, as a point of clarification, is an unsubstantial modification the same as a minor modification?
Yeah, wrong terminology. Minor modification.
Is there going to be a walkway going out to it?
There is not a.
Because if you're going to have the ambulance going, they're going to have to walk across your lawn and, I mean, you're not gaining much of the wealth going through the front door.
Well, we could construct a walkway, but it's not part of this plan.
Okay. This is one of those areas that... Kinda going backwards on, you could've had this done the first time. Any comment from the building inspector, commissioner? Okay. So the original setback was 38 feet that we approved, right? And you're looking for 44 now? Is that... Am I reading that wrong or...
The new deck will be 44 feet, so we're not intensifying any of the nonconformance.
Right, under the prior approval, the board allowed up to 38 feet. So even though the deck is getting larger, it'll still be six feet further than what the board had allowed for the addition.
Six feet closer to the... Six feet more relief from the original roof.
No, no. The original roof is 38, this would be 44, so it's inside there.
So this deck must be getting shifted over?
The existing deck, so the proposed deck would move... Would add 16 inches towards the, uh, the stone wall and the trail easement. Either 12 or 16 inches. Excuse me?
It's gonna be bigger, yeah. Because this was the addition.
Right, yeah.
And this is inside. That deck is smaller, that could be just bigger, but it doesn't come further from the stone wall, should be the addition.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the enlargement is strictly for access for emergency?
Also for convenience.
Just looking at the topography and stuff, by putting that deck on, it's not gonna have any... It's not gonna help the fire department at all.
See, I'm saying it's a difficult... It's a long way around and everything.
Yeah. Get the little... Looks like a retaining wall there on the... Inside.
No, that retaining wall was an existing... It's not a retaining wall. It's all essentially level from front to back, and, uh, that, uh... That stone wall was demolished as part of the construction. So there's actually a passageway through there.
And then there's a deck on the existing house too, correct?
There is, yeah. It's shown solid.
Is that the same height off the ground?
So, this... Both of them are under 30 inches. The... On the existing dwelling, it's about, I'd say, maybe 12 or 14 inches, and this one will be more like 16, 18 inches. The grade.
And how big's the deck on the existing dwelling?
I don't have the dimensions offhand. That is to scale.
So it looks to be three times the size of the one you're proposing? If I take the box that the proposed one is, I could probably fit three of those in that existing deck?
Probably, yes.
You said there's access doors on that existing deck, the main house deck?
For the main house, there's an access door, yes. It's a...
I'll watch the door there.
It's just a single.
So, Joe, if this is... If this board determines that this is a minor modification, does it get recorded with the original...
Yeah, so the board could find that it's a minor modification to prior approval, so it would end up going with the prior decision. You also, if you do find it, also have to approve it as well, even if, you know, you might say it's minor, but approve it, I guess. If you do find it's not minor and that it is substantial, then it would go in front of a public hearing.
So if tonight, we decide it's a minor modification, we still have to vote that it is a minor...
To approve the change, right.
Well, you're doubling the size of the deck, so I don't consider that to be minor.
Well, another piece of this, I don't know if it's pertinent or not, because the last time there was some clamor from various folks, but this doesn't require public notice, I assume. This...
This particular request to find out whether or not the board would consider this a minor modification.
So the only difference would be if we went forward with a public hearing, the notice would be required to abut us.
Right, it'd be like the same as any other public hearing process.
You know, and I don't know if any abutters are impacted by this. It's... It's only the same distance from the easement, so it's kinda... It's almost like a jump ball, I guess. Without public notification, it flies under the radar. On the other hand, I don't think it's... Would substantially impact any abutters either. You know, if we gave notice and no abutters had responded to the meeting next time, or if we did, maybe some abutters would respond, so I don't know if that's an issue, the public notice piece.
There were no abutters who appeared at the hearing in opposition.
One of those, some discussion about the trail. I can't recall exactly...
They were not abutters.
They weren't abutters, but they were participants in the process outside of it.
There were... At the initial hearing, there were people here. One point of contention was that the public, Westford citizens, should have access to that trail easement.
Yes.
And I think the net-net was the addition, although it was 38 feet, and three from the line could coexist with the easement. And I think if Mr. Bentley would agree that the expanded deck could coexist with the trail easement, it would be... I would think we could consider it a minor modification. That's my take.
I guess there has been no issues with the trail easement from construction.
Well, in the past, I mean, in the past, there has... It's not been the most friendly relationship, and there has been brush and stuff piled where that easement is.
I'm not aware of that, and there's been no... There's been no discussion of that, and I don't think that's at all true.
I believe that was in the last meeting we discussed it.
Do you have any issues with that easement and people having access to it?
No. No, it's...
I mean, with that caveat, I think...
Yeah.
I mean, I would have no objection to us saying this is a minor change to the initial approval.
Okay. You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna determine that this is a minor modification? And are you looking for us to vote and say, "Yes, it is a minor modification"?
Yes, please.
So can we have a...
Make a motion that this is approved as a minor modification.
Speaker by Jay. Do you want a roll call or all in favor?
However you would prefer, Mr. Jay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set to expand your deck? Okay, the next thing that we have here is Mass Housing on Sugar Maple with the costs and profitability and everything else. Joe, do you have any comment on this?
Sure, so...
That's before your time, but I'm sure you can speak to it.
Sure, yeah. So this project was a 40B project. It was approved in 2018. Construction, they got their certificate of... Last certificate of occupancy towards the end of last year. So as a part of the follow-up to that, they need to go ahead, have their financials essentially reviewed to show they didn't exceed thresholds that are under 40B, it's 760 CMR 56, to show that their profitability was under 20% of a return on investment. So their financials were reviewed by Mass Housing, as well as a third-party independent certified public accountant, and their numbers check out. Their profit was 13, 14% on the project, so... Two different folks reviewed their financials. Everything seems to check out, but Mass Housing does give the board the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments prior to them finalizing their report.
I think it's interesting, some of the fees and things that they need to start to see here, rent, whatever, some other ones.
And they go through and make sure their costs are comparable to what you would expect for this kind of development in this area.
Any other comment on the board from Sugar Maple?
It's just kinda like, it is what it is. I mean, for us to fine-tune this or... I don't know how we would do anything, but kinda generally gloss it. They say it's good, I guess we say it's good. I would think so.
I mean, it's less than 20%, and they're sort of well under that, so it doesn't raise any red flags to me.
No, and I don't think we can scrutinize this in any way, shape, or form. Kinda like, it's out there and I'm sure this is... Part of the 40B process, right? You have to complete... Exactly. Right, and you have to make sure that they've abide by those guidelines, right? So they've successfully completed that process then, right?
Right, yeah. To your point, they didn't come in at like 19.98 or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the only comment that I'll make is that the 40B process is broken. We passed these things to make them so that people who grew up in Westford could live in Westford, or so on and so forth, and I guarantee you go down there, you're not gonna find one kid who grew up in Westford living in that place.
No, especially after the second round of sale.
Yeah.
The second, off the... Any talks of the state.
Well, that might be... Might be able to go away for a while, hopefully for a long while.
So you don't need to vote or anything on that, do you?
Nope, just if the board had any comments or concerns, we could certainly relay that message, but if not, then that's fine.
Staff, have anything else?
Do you have anything? Do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. You guys took your turning wheels off tonight on your own, huh? Good job.
Nice not to have Jeff in our way.
Thank you for your assistance.
Close the public hearing.
What's that? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting closed.